All right, let's get started. So good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance, we have from the committee, myself, of course, Councilmember Burnett of the 8th District, Councilman Cohen of the 1st District, Councilman Costello is running a little bit late, Councilwoman Glover of the 13th District, Councilwoman Porter is running a little bit late as well, and Councilwoman Ramos is running a little bit late as well. I'll make sure to recognize them when they do enter the meeting. I don't see any other council members.
Mr. Chair, I just came on. Sorry to be late.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you.
Members from the Office of the President, do we have Nikki Thompson on the line? Matt Segman? Herndy Graffin Ray?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Representing the Mayor's Office, do we have Natasha Mehu? Or Anita Themelis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And finally, of the agencies, I'll do a roll call and just see who we have in attendance today from the Police Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Colonel Briscoe here.
Thank you, Colonel Briscoe.
Hi there, Chairman. I'm Michelle Worksberger, Director of Government Affairs for the Record for BPD, and we're also joined by Shannon Conway.
Awesome. From the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdoch, Legislative Liaison for DHCD.
Thank you. From the Department of Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. This is Marcia Collins, Chief of the Office of Legislative Affairs for DPW, and also Janelle Mummy joining.
Excellent. Thank you. From the Department of Transportation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT.
From the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success.
Mr. Chair, Leah Ferguson, Chief Policy and Partnerships for MSCS.
Thank you, Leah. From the Mayor, from the Office of Emergency Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deputy Chief Wallace from OEM.
Okay. From the Mayor's Office of Human Services.
Hi, Katie York with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services.
Thank you. From the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amy Beth Leiser, Chief of Staff from the Fire Department.
From the Housing Authority.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Bill.
Sorry, Janet, I didn't see you. Bill Wells, Senior Vice President for Business Strategy at the Housing Authority.
Janet Abraham, CEO for the Housing Authority.
Excellent. Thank you. From the Baltimore City Public School System. From the State Attorney's Office. And finally, from the Department of Social Services. All right. So this afternoon, the committee will be hearing, we'll have a hearing for Bill LO 21-0006 Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan for the purpose of the committee holding a hearing quarterly to review crime statistics for the Police Department and to monitor the progress of the Biennial Violence Prevention Plan. This bill was introduced February 8, 2021, and it was sponsored by myself, Councilmember Conway. Really looking forward to jumping into this issue. We know that we have struggled as a city with violence for a very long time, and we are going to need innovative and forward-thinking ways to approach these issues, and I'm excited to have the opportunity today to talk to the Health Department and Monty, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, to understand the plan that you guys have collaborated on to put forward and achieving what we know we need to achieve. So without further ado, I want to jump into agency reports and start off with the Health Department. I understand you guys have a presentation. Dr. Zaraza?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Conway. I believe that was shared, and I believe was, I guess, City Council going to present that, or do I need to pull that up? I don't currently have access to share my screen.
If you want to present it, we can give you access.
I'm good with City Council presenting, and I can just talk through it.
Okay. All right, give us a moment. We'll pull it up.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. As Chair Conway mentioned, my name is Dr. Latisha Zaroff, and I'm the Commissioner of Health for the Baltimore City Health Department. I do want to take a moment and acknowledge the other council members on the call. Councilman Cohen, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Costello, Councilwoman Glover, Councilwoman Ramos, and Councilwoman Porter. Today, I'll be presenting background on the citywide violence prevention framework, and then we'll turn it over to my colleague, Director Shantae Jackson of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, to talk further. Next slide. Great. So at a very high level, I will talk a little bit about violence as a public health issue, provide some overview of the legislation, talk about the purpose of the Citywide Violence Prevention Task Force. I will discuss our planning process, an overall framework development, as well as review a timeline, and discuss the partnership with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Next slide. So in 2018, the American Public Health Association released a policy statement deeming violence a public health crisis. It is known that exposure to trauma and violence is directly linked to development of chronic diseases. It's also known that individuals with acute and chronic exposure to trauma and violence are more likely to have increased risk-taking behaviors, increased rates of sexually transmitted infections, higher rates of suicide, and increased rates of depression, anxiety, and PTSD. Therefore, exposure to violence in and of itself is what we in public health call a social determinant of health, and most often, that exposure is completely preventable. The social determinants of health are conditions in the environments where people are born, live, learn, work, grow, play, and worship, and they affect a wide range of health issues. When we think about violence and why it's a public health issue, it's important to look at the links that violence has to some of the social disadvantages that people experience. So we know that violence can affect health-related behaviors. For instance, if you are in a neighborhood that is very violent, it might limit your ability to do physical activity. It might influence your eating habits if you're only able to shop at the neighborhood corner store as opposed to going elsewhere to get groceries. We know that parents may not let their children walk to school if the neighborhood is more violent, again, cutting down on physical activity. We also know that violence-related stress can lead to poorer health. So there's evidence that exposure to violence, acute and chronic, long-term exposure, can can cause physiologic effects on a person that makes them more susceptible to poor health. Chronic stress has been linked to rapid onset and progression of chronic illnesses, and exposure to stress, particularly in childhood, can influence your ability to create, or to cope rather, with stressors later on in life. We also know that violence influences health through its impact on the social and economic conditions in communities. For example, if there is a neighborhood that is highly violent, others might be less likely to invest. So there's less investment overall in health-promoting community resources that might exist in other neighborhoods. So this creates less opportunities overall. For example, a company not going to, not building a supermarket in a highly violent neighborhood, contributing to the creation of food deserts where residents have less options to purchase fresh foods. Again, these violence-related disincentives for community investment affect access to jobs and affect overall health. Next slide. So prevention is key. Violence is not randomly distributed. The same social factors that shape health are also strongly linked to violence, and addressing those links will more effectively help us with violence prevention. For a true and lasting impact, we have to go upstream to address the root causes of violence or address those social determinants of health that I mentioned. Our programs and our services should be directly linked to what the community has identified as a need. How we equitably deliver those services is also extremely important. Are we culturally competent? Are we community-driven in our approach? Are we inclusive of marginalized groups? We must address the structural disadvantages across systems for true progress, keeping the community's needs at the forefront of our response. Next slide. So for many of the reasons I just outlined, last year, the City Council passed the Biennial Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, or Council Bill 19-0451, designating the Health Department as the lead agency to convene a task force with specified agencies establishing the contents of a comprehensive violence prevention plan and requiring publication of that plan to the city's website for public comment. The development and coordination of this plan includes collaborating or bringing together 16 agencies across the city, including the Police Department, including city schools, many of them are represented on this call, as well as state-supported offices and the Maryland State Department of Juvenile Services. While this core group laid the foundation for the framework, we know that this effort will take additional city agencies and organizations, as well as community members and community leaders, to achieve the desired results. Next slide. So the purpose of this task force was to develop a citywide violence prevention framework that really collectively addressed violence and trauma by addressing those social determinants of health. The content of the plan should focus on a social determinants of health as prescribed by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and be community and data-driven. Subsequently, the Health Department facilitated planning session using results-based accountability approach to complete this initial framework. Next slide. So as I mentioned, we posted this this framework after we had gone through the eight planning sessions for public comment, and in a moment, I'll be able to pass the torch on the presentation over to my partner, Director Jackson, where the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement is really focused on operationalizing this plan. So the initial task force came together, put together a framework, and are passing the torch on to Monty for operationalizing that plan. Next slide. So this is a very quick slide of many of the agencies that were involved, most of whom are represented on the call today. Next slide. So this is just a high-level description of the sessions that we hosted. So as I mentioned, we use the results-based accountability approach. We provided the task force members with an orientation. We established what the framework was. We all worked together to develop results and indicators. We began something called Turn the Curve Process, which is where we think of really unique and innovative strategies. We began to finalize those strategies, again internally, and developed the public comment survey, which we posted and released later, as well as integrated that public comment into the final framework, which I believe this this committee has already received. So this is just part one. Again, this is very much focused on the high-level framework. And again, Director Jackson will talk a bit more about operationalizing that plan. Next slide. So as mentioned, for those that aren't familiar, the results-based accountability approach really starts with your end in mind. So it really starts with what is the outcome that you're hoping to achieve? What are those results? And then you select indicators for each of those results. So what are the data points that you're going to use to know that you're making progress? You subsequently, again, continue to work backwards, and from there, you select the strategies and the agencies and the partners. Next steps, as I mentioned, will be presented by Director Jackson, but really involves engaging the community to develop overall strategies and then implementing those strategies. Next slide. So as a group, the key indicators and results that we came up with are listed. We're really looking to create a city where there's equitable life opportunities, equitable life expectancy, where residents are safe and are thriving, and the indicators we selected typically are publicly available metrics that anyone can track along, and they include graduation rates, life expectancy for citizens here in the city, uniform crime reporting data, as well as the percentage of the population that are employed. Next slide. So very quickly, this is the initial timeline. With the initial bill being passed on May 18, 2020, we began to convene the the task force members in September of 2020. By November 12, using results-based accountability, we had created some initial results and indicators for public comment, presented that that plan and that work after incorporating public feedback to the Mayor's Office, met with Director Jackson, who's been working with us from day one, on how you operationalize this framework. Next slide. And again, Director Jackson will really be focusing on, now that we have this initial framework, how do we operationalize this plan? So it, again, very excited to be partnering with Monty on this work. I think before Director Jackson even started, she and I met to begin talking about what this would look like. So with that, I will turn it over to her.
Thank you, Dr. Zaraza. I want to first, before we hand it over to to Monty, are there any questions from the committee before we jump into the actual implementation of the plan? Seeing no questions. Shantae, flow is yours. Oh, and I also want to acknowledge Councilman Costello, who's now joined the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, committee members, and thank you, Commissioner Durassa, for your partnership. Before I get started, I want to just say that the deck that I'm going to be presenting today provides a high-level overview of the five-year draft Violence Prevention Strategic Plan. You all should have received the detailed document on March 15. So to the extent that we need to refer to that, I do have it here in front of me. Before I jump in here, I want to specifically call out that this draft of the strategic plan was informed by BPD's crime plan, informed by the Mayor's Public Safety Priorities, the Health Department's Violence Prevention Framework, and most importantly, community voices shared through the Mayor's Public Health and Safety Transition Committee recommendations. The Health Commissioner shared with you all the timeline leading up to the Health Department's handoff of the framework to Monty on January 8. I'm going to talk to you in a minute about what's happened since then. Before I do, I want to say that while this strategic plan isn't about closing BPD's doors, it is very clear to us that an overreliance on policing in our communities to reduce violence just has not been working, that it hasn't strengthened community safety, and that there now's the time for us to pay attention to the social cost of overpolicing in our communities so that we're working with community members to co-produce public safety in ways that facilitate with them. Does that mean giving feedback or someone else? Okay. Next slide, please. So here's what's happened since January 8, which is technically the the day before I started, as the Health Commissioner mentioned. She, her team and I met and talked about what opera, making the plan work for the community would look like. I started on January 11, and by February 22, the mayor had a plan in his hands that he approved as a draft, for all intents and purposes. February 23 was his day one to Monty. Want to talk here about the 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 mayor's thoughts around what community engagement looks like. He will not consider the plan finalized until Baltimoreians have had the opportunity to talk about the plan with us, to both challenge us and support us in our thinking, and to set the vision together for what a safer Baltimore looks like. And so you'll see that there is an announcement of the planned draft to the community on March 15, and every Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday in April, twice a night, my team is conducting virtual sessions with Baltimore City residents across all council districts, and even with some micro communities such as the returning citizens community, the Latinx community, the American, Asian, Pacific Islander community, the LGBTQ community, the faith-based community, because it's important that we hear from everyone. In May, we'll be hearing directly from our youth. So the mayor plans on hosting a youth summit that will be focused on violence and hearing directly back from young folks what community healing, safety, quality of life improvements look like to them from their perspectives. We'll hit day one, I'm sorry, day 100 on June 2, as you see here in the timeline, and we'll have the plan finalized just three months after it's gone out to the community for their feedback on June 15. Next slide here. Not going to spend a lot of time on this slide, but I will say that the draft Monty plan is guided by Mayor Scott's vision for our city. It's a vision rooted in the co-production of safety and violence prevention. Like many plans before it, our plan is data and research-driven, and it's results-oriented, but we didn't stop there on purpose. My teammates and I sought to create a plan that's equity-based, that's healing-centered, that's trauma-informed. We understand that real justice is about more than just punishment. It's about restoration, about renewal, and about healing. This plan is intentionally partnership-based and seeks to build trust with the community through transparency. The plan also leverages what we hear quite often be pillars, if you will, of prevention, intervention, enforcement, reentry, and rehabilitation. So in the next few slides, I'll be sharing with you strategies and methodologies within three pillars that really use those strategies. Next slide. So here you see the three pillars, the first one being public health approach to violence, community engagement, and inter-agency collaboration being the second pillar, and those being followed by evaluation and accountability. Next slide. So this first pillar is leveraging a public health approach to violence, and I want to pause here to explain public health approach because in my conversations and discovery with professionals, I've come to understand that this means different things to different people, and I want to talk about what it means to Monty. So for Monty, public health approach means that the strategies that we're creating are driven by an understanding of the risks, the who, the what, the where, the behaviors, the environments, and then it's informed by science or what works and what doesn't work, and is committed to justice and equity while simultaneously being practical in its implementation. So within this first pillar, you see gun violence prevention, victim services, youth justice, community healing, and reentry. The first strategy is one that you've heard the mayor talk about, the Group Violence Reduction Strategy, or GBRAS, which is also known as focused deterrence, is an evidence-based initiative designed to reduce serious violence. The strategy works by engaging directly with those who are intimately involved and affected by violence, leveraging an intentional collaboration between law enforcement and social services, community members, and community-based organizations who come together and collectively cosign and deliver an anti-violence message to stop the shooting. The GBRAS message is grounded in the understanding that every person and every community needs and deserves to be safe, that violence is often driven by a very small number of groups and people, that to increase safety, we have to collectively focus on that small number of people in order to support them in their daily lives, communicate community norms in support of everybody's safety and success, and where necessary, necessary creates swift, certain illegitimate sanctions for violence. When implemented with fidelity, GBRAS has been proven to work. It can achieve what few other strategies can. It can reduce homicides and non-fatal shootings while simultaneously minimizing the criminal justice footprint and empowering communities to co-produce public safety. GBRAS has the the formal evaluation record, the strongest evaluation record, rather, of any violence prevention initiative designed to reduce homicides and non-fatal shootings. It's documented that it can reduce homicides and shootings anywhere between 30% and 60%. In light of its impressive performance, it's become one of the leading strategies for cities like Baltimore who were plagued with gun violence. For example, when Oakland's GBRAS implementation was successful, they were able to cut their homicide rate in half by cut their homicide homicide rate by 50% between 2012 and 2018, which was a 20-year low. And at the same time, they were able to double their clearance rates on their law enforcement side. So the work of gun violence prevention also means that we need to take a strategic look and investment in our Safe Streets program. That's going to involve assessing the program through three lenses, the lens of operations, the lens of culture, and the lens of implementation so that we can identify areas of strength and areas of development. We're going to be doing that by drawing on the expertise of our Safe Streets workers, of program participants, of violence prevention and intervention specialists by reaching as far as New York and taking a look at that model and research. Along with our partners, we're also going to be working to provide safety and supports to survivors of crime. I'm going to share with you all a little bit later on the work that we're already doing in this space. Around youth justice, another strategy that we're going to be employing is the Pilot of Sidestep, which is a pre-arrest diversion strategy for our young folks and will, quite frankly, be the first pre-arrest diversion strategy that we've employed here in Baltimore City. It was created as a result of young folks, community members, and Western District police officers, including, at the time, Major Briscoe, on the heels of the uprising after the death of Freddie Gray in police custody. This next item here around community healing. So Mayor Scott's been talking about addressing the broader social determinants of health for a long time now, long before he became mayor, because he understands that we see direct impacts on acts of violence committed in neighborhoods, that entire communities get treated as dangerous in our city, and instead of resorting to overpolicing our neighborhoods that have experienced disproportionate amounts of trauma, that we've got to address the root causes that you heard Dr. Durassa talk about so that we create opportunities for neighborhoods to heal. So strategies that we're looking to deploy here are the development and piloting of a shooting response initiative to address immediate needs, social-emotional supports, and prevent retaliation. You've also heard the mayor say that he's soon going to be releasing strategies around a 911 diversion pilot. That work's been going on for some time now, and our team is very excited about what's going to be announced pretty soon, so that police are handling emergencies that require a law enforcement response, and clinicians and practitioners and others are handling other engagements. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, not yet. I think I meant, I forgot to talk about this reentry piece here. And it's last, but certainly not least, the work that we're going to be doing with regard to partnering with returning citizens for success. Prior to COVID, we had about 10,000 folks return to Baltimore City after being released from the penal system, and within three years' time, we see about 50% of those get arrested again, get locked up again. The recidivism rates are are high. We know that we need to make sure that we're helping returning citizens be successful, that not all returning citizens are high-risk, but all returning citizens are at risk. And so making sure that we're creating opportunities for them to take advantage of the post-release. One of the things that we're looking to do here is stand up a Returning Citizens Council. The Returning Citizens Council will be made up of returning citizens themselves, in addition to community-based organizations that provide supports for them, and philanthropic organizations so that we are able to afford them those opportunities. Next slide, please. This second pillar is community engagement and inter-agency collaboration. And and it really is just that, right? So around neighborhood engagement and capacity building specifically, we want to make sure that we're sustainably addressing violence and structural inequity with an intersectional approach. So just like individuals have their own unique needs, so do neighborhoods, and it's important for folks across Baltimore City to engage in the process of healing actively, both for themselves, themselves and their community. So this community capacity building piece is really core here. It's not just about providing technical assistance to neighborhoods. It's also about making sure that we're investing in our neighborhoods, whether that be serving as an intermediary for pass-through of grant dollars so that they're helping us co-produce safety or partnering with folks on providing training around how do you better grant, right? What what other sorts of technical assistance do you need? What about outreach training? Those sorts of things. We can't say that we want assistance in creating high qualities of life and then not give folks the tools that they need to do that work with us. On the inter-agency coordination piece, the city is responsible for proactively addressing the needs of our residents and not just reacting to the issues as they come up. And so Monty's been tasked with driving cross-system accountability. And so MONC's been tasked with driving cross-system accountability among not just local partners, agencies, but also state and federal agencies that serve our city. I've been fortunate enough to get connected to folks at the local, state and federal level, and much of this coordination is happening already. One of the things that we're going to be doing here is we're going to be resurrecting the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. We've even gotten heads in conversations with Governor Hogan's team around this and will be preparing a proposal in the next 60 days for him to take a look at. So we've gotten some soft commitments from his office that as long as we can demonstrate that we've done the discovery that we needed to do here to make sure that, that the reasons why it didn't work well the last time, that we'll have support from, from the state level going forward. We're really excited about that because we've got the opportunity to focus on so many different things. We could look at gun cases, we could look at violence, we could look at possession, we could look at trafficking, we could look at a whole host of things, and we're excited here. Finally, on this building key partnerships piece, this is less about the, less about sourcing of funds and more about making sure that we're looking beyond Baltimore City to establish partnerships in places where we see the work that agencies, organizations are doing would benefit Baltimore. And so not necessarily looking to bring models into Baltimore City because we would never want to replicate something, but understanding what frameworks exist out there that we could bring back into Baltimore and apply from a geographic and a cultural competency perspective. Next slide, please. And this third pillar here is evaluation and accountability. So as I mentioned before, our plan is going to be driven by data, evidence, community-based best practices. We're going to be creating key performance indicators that assess our holistic approach to violence, and we're going to be sharing the metrics, the data, the experiences with key agencies being held accountable for their contribution to public safety. The team and I are really excited about Neighborhood Stat, which builds on something that you all have heard the mayor talk about, City Stat, twofold. So City Stat looks to have a holistic statistical view of all of our agencies and ways that we're able to aggregate and disaggregate data. But how we get to Neighborhood Stat is also bringing in community partners. So how do we bring in Benia, Seema Iyer? And I were literally just emailing this morning, we're really excited about partnering with Benia and the data that they've collected. Also interested in making sure that we partner with Live Baltimore, with Annie Millie, and bringing in information that they capture. But even on top of that, making sure that we're going into neighborhoods because we know that safety looks and feels different to different neighborhoods. I live in Howard Park. Safety looks and feels very different there than it does in Morale Park or Roland Park or Darley Park. And wanting to make sure that Neighborhood, Neighborhood Stat is a way for us to understand each neighborhood's current situation, including their current assets or the assets that are needed to improve public safety. And then rounding out this pillar here is policy and research. Using this research-driven methodology, making sure that we're going back into this previous pillar of key partnerships and bringing that all the way back into this first pillar associated with our public health approach to make policy recommendations, not just to you all, but also making policy recommendations at a state and a federal level. A great example of this is my office just recently made a recommendation to the city delegation with regard to the amount of funds we believe they should be looking for Governor Hogan to allocate to violence intervention and prevention programming out of the 1.9 that will be coming down with regard to the relief work. And we're excited to have federal partners that we're working with right now to provide the mayor with a recommendation on how we should be positioning Baltimore well in taking advantage of President Biden's commitment of $5 billion over an eight-year period to violence intervention and prevention programming. Next slide. Next slide. So what's different? I, I get asked this a lot. So what's different between what was and what is now? Next slide. So before this office's creation, the Office of Criminal Justice existed. And these are the lanes of work that were associated with that office. Administration and finance specifically around providing grants and contracts management around violence prevention, management of the City Watch system, coordination really revolved solely around people-based strategies associated with sexual assault response, human trafficking and domestic violence. And then obviously, our homegrown Safe Streets program. Let's go to next slide and talk about what's different. This is the scope of MONC. And so what's different is not just the name change. What's different is that we are really taking a holistic approach to violence prevention and safety in our community. So while you still see administration and finance, gun violence reduction and coordination, you see that these are blown out significantly. We anticipate that the amount, amount of grant dollars that will be passing through to community-based organizations will grow exponentially. That coordination now needs to expand into policy planning and coordination. We've really got to pay attention to how we keep our young people from being involved in the criminal justice system to begin with. And what are those cutting-edge policies that allow us to do that? What about mental and behavioral health policy? Baltimore is already thinking about 911 diversion and going to be piloting that soon. How do we scale that up? How do we get that across the city? Reentry policy, violence prevention policy. Our planning pieces revolve around how are we effectively communicating to our neighborhoods? What's available to them? What the resources are that they could take advantage of? And making sure that communication is two-way. How are we tracking data, evaluating ourselves and making sure that we're successful? That we are actually driving to the results and indicators that the commissioner spoke to? In addition to that, you see this group violence reduction strategy baked in here. And then finally, the community empowerment and opportunity piece. This is a huge part of the work that we're going to be doing going forward. And so again, just want to share with the council that this wasn't just a name change. We lost a couple of things out of our scope and we gained probably three times more things in our scope. Next slide, please. And so what's next? So at the beginning of the deck, I shared with you all the 100-day plan, right? The 100-day plan started on February 23rd. That was the day after the mayor approved the draft, and it ends on January, I'm sorry, on June 2nd. These are the pillars that you just looked at. The one at the top is an additional administrative pillar, if you will. It's about creating the infrastructure to do the work. But here are the items that we need to accomplish by June 2nd. What's worth sharing with you all here is that we are in the process of creating a tracker pretty similar to the one that the mayor created, so that we are being transparent and the community and the council can see how we're tracking against all of these goals. I suspect that that tracker will be ready for publication by the end of next week. We're working pretty closely with our new Director of Data, Justin Elzias. I hope I said his name right. Next slide, please. And so what have we done so far? I'm not going to go through all of these, but I do want to share with you all that it's my 86th day. And I'm quite proud of the accomplishments of the team in 86 days, that we have stood MONC up, that we've created a new logo, that we have been really clear with the community about what our engagement philosophy is, that it is full-on engagement with the community, that's two-way. We've launched a digital presence. We are actively implementing a communications plan that not only accounts for virtual participation, but we're in the process of creating a postcard that's going to be mailed out to homes. We're in the process of recording a charm TV spot. We're in the process of securing a radio spot so that we are able to get to every single Baltimorean, so that this plan is Baltimore's plan. So that we are sure that the vision that we're setting forward is a shared vision. It's the mayor's vision in partnership with the residents of Baltimore City. I would say that, that I'm also managing agency culture, which, which is interesting coming into city government for the first time and employee experience as I deal with separations and onboarding folks at the same time. Around policy planning and coordination, just a couple of things to highlight here. We've already created an intimate partner Violence Lethality Review Team. We know that we've seen an uptick in the homicides associated with domestic violence in our city. And so this is one of the things that we've already done out of the gate. My agency is responsible for coordinating this effort with BPD, with other city agencies and with community-based organizations, and we've done a decent job at that. We hold weekly meetings with the Baltimore Police Department. We are in the process of doing discovery for the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. I've hired our Policy Planning and Coordination Associate Director. As I mentioned before, we've provided legislative recommendations to the delegation for VIP funding at the request of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. We have joined the Child Fatality Review Committee and will be assuming ownership of that in the coming months, or at least coordination of, ownership of the coordination of that. We recently joined Baltimore City Public Schools Community Advisory Group. From an administrative and finance perspective, when I walked in the door, there were 20 severely overdue community-based organization contracts out there to the tune of $8 million. And so I was able to take care of making sure that those got through and that community-based organizations got paid. Some of these contracts went back to fiscal year 19. And so imagine the credibility that we now have to re-establish as an agency with community-based organizations who have been ready to partner and who hadn't been getting paid for that partnership. We've awarded six anti-human trafficking grants to the tune of $233,000. Some of those awards went to organizations that had never gotten city money ever before. And so looking at the grants process differently, making sure that we're accounting for those organizations that don't necessarily have the capacity or the team to effectively write a grant but have demonstrated impact on the ground, and then coming on the backside of providing that grant and providing them with free technical assistance so that the next time they write a grant, they can get it. We also assume grant development oversight responsibility for public safety initiatives. And so I now am the Chair of the Grant Development Committee for the Baltimore Police Department. I have invited the Health Commissioner and her team to participate in that so that we're looking at grant requests, whether we're making them or giving them through a total lens of safety and health. I'm really excited about that. And then I guess the final thing that I'll bring out here under the Gun Violence Reduction piece is we recently awarded the Adult Support and Outreach Provider Contract for GBRs to the tune of $1.2 million to a community-based organization that does work here in Baltimore and has proven to be effective. And we're excited about that. Next slide. And so, Mr. Chair, I'll stop here. I will note that the committee has two other slides in the appendix. I don't plan on addressing those, but wanted to make sure that I was transparent in what the work planned ahead looks like for the coming year and the coming term.
Thank you, Director Jackson. And I, I want to, I want to thank you for all the work that you and your team have put into this plan so far in less than 90 days, which is amazing to think, because it's felt like a lot longer than 90 days. Yeah, I have a bunch of questions, and I just want to start off with, with a couple, and then we'll come back around as we hear from the, the rest of the committee. My first question is with regard to the difference between MOCJ and that, that org chart, that structure, and the structure of, of MONC. And can you tell me a little about what we expect by way of staff and how that affects the budget for, for the office? Have you guys begun to think that through?
Yes. So thanks for the question, Mr. Chair. As the strategic plan outlines the what, what immediately had to come after that was the how are we going to do this? What tasks, abilities, skills, knowledge are needed in order for us to effectively figure out this work functionally? I will say that what you saw in the org chart was the functional work. And that was the functional work over a five-year period of time. So while we have scoped that out, it's with the assumption that the team is going to grow over time that we are going to leverage team members that we have in place, that we're also going to be making some decisions associated with the reallocation of responsibilities. For fiscal year '22, I'm sure you know the budget's pretty, was pretty baked before the mayor took office. Our operating budget for fiscal year '22 is roughly $19.4 million. But I would say that the city budget doesn't tell the whole side of the story with regard to our office's work. In addition to city funding, we also leverage state, federal, private and philanthropic funding for much of the GBRs work. We are grateful to have a whole host of funders to the tune of 1, 1.2 million there. So we're going to be giving 1.2 million to youth advocate programs. As I mentioned, we've also raised over $1 million for the multi-year technical assistance work that GBRs is going to account for. I think the, the long and the short of the answer is we're balancing our funding streams right now. And my personal philosophy around philanthropy is, and I believe that most of our local philanthropists agree with this philosophy, that we should be using philanthropy for two reasons only. Proof of concept, innovation. So that after I proved that a concept works, that we're now having conversations about general funds allocation and/or one-time purchases.
Thank you. So if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying that in the near term, before we expand in any substantial way, that framework should mostly be looked at the way that you organize the office and think about the various responsibilities that the office will be trying to tackle in the coming years. But we're, we're finding ways to raise money through local philanthropy is essentially what you're saying, to fund some of this stuff.
Yes. And, and I would also say that coming into the office, so obviously there's a freeze given the deficit that the, the city is facing right now. But coming into the office, probably because of it being an administration change, there were some positions that were vacated before I came in. And so being able to reallocate those positions to other more pressing work, given the change in strategy, was something that I took advantage of right away.
Awesome. Thank you. The other question I have is with regards to the strategy, how does the Violence Prevention Strategy interface with the Police Department's strategy? How is it similar? How is it different? How do you make it weave together in a tightly knit way?
Yeah, absolutely. Another good question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as I mentioned before, there are regular meetings with Police Commissioner and I from a leadership perspective, but in addition to that, there are regular meetings between my team and his team. For example, the Police Department is currently working on a host of consent decree mandates, one of which revolves around community policing and the introduction of neighborhood policing plans. And so my office is actually managing the project for them and coordinating agencies so that that work happens in concert, so that we are using the, the assets that we've got in the that we are using um the the assets that we've got in the community, partnering them with the assets of BPD to co-produce that public safety. That's just one example of the work that we're doing together. And I mentioned the DV lethality reviews that we're doing together.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Uh I'm going to open the floor to questions from the committee. Uh I see Councilman Costello, excuse me, Councilwoman Cohen has a question, uh and Councilwoman Ramos and then Porter after that. Cohen?
Um thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director Jackson, Commissioner Girasa, uh for all the work. And I do want to uh really thank you for the collaborative, thoughtful way in which you're going about this, leveraging community-based partnerships and engaging with folks um that often don't feel reached out to within city government. Um also appreciate that there was seemingly a smooth handoff between the Health Department and Monsi. Um and so it's good to see when agencies are connecting in that kind of way and that there's continuity of work that appears to be happening and likely will continue to happen. Um Director Jackson, I wanted to ask specifically about uh populations that face increased challenges when it comes to violence. I think specifically about um our trans and LGBTQ brothers, sisters, and siblings. I think about um you and I were on a walk the other night in Highland Town where our Hispanic community um has experienced a high degree of violence of late. Um and I think for some really specific reasons, um whether they're being targeted or not is not for me to say, but I know that the perception in the community is that they are being targeted. And so I'm curious how your office plans to address populations within our city that, one, are distrustful of not only police but city government as well? And, two, the way in which um through, you mentioned credible messengers, you mentioned partnerships and all the rest, but how do we plan to bring folks in who are skeptical um of your office and of the the work generally?
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that question. Um I I think that the approach is multi-pronged. Um and I'm gonna I'm gonna talk about what I think will be the longer prong, uh because it speaks to the partnership that the Health Commissioner and I have been able to forge. So um as we wrap up this session and plan to debrief the task force that she convened uh as a result of the ordinance, a handoff will happen to me. And in during that handoff, what we'll be communicating to city agencies is that the task force is going to grow inside, that it's no longer just going to be limited to um those agencies that were mandated in the ordinance. It is also going to include all of the agencies in Baltimore City, and it's going to include community members so that we can develop that trust. Um so that we are bringing in um to your to your earlier point, credible messengers in the LGBT community, credible messengers in the Latinx community, and the returning citizens community, and um the the um American Asian Pacific Islander community, so that we can leverage the relationships that we're creating there to create uh stronger relationships out in the community. Uh the second part of that is, for any relationship to be a trusting one, there's gotta be consistency in engagement. You gotta show up. You you you've just gotta show up, right? Um it can't just be a meeting. You've got to be present there. Um in addition to showing up, that engagement has to be authentic. And in Baltimore, you know, I mean, the saying is real knows real. And so it means showing up in all the ways that the community not just um needs you to show up, but deserves you to show up and expects you to show up. The other part or or the other prong of that work is making sure that um we're engaging with the community as an agency um as frequently as possible, right? And but when I say as an agency, I'm talking specifically about Monsi from a community engagement perspective, leveraging the work of other offices, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods, African-American male engagement, to go out and make sure that we're getting to the folks who have inherent distrust um for not just law enforcement, but for um politicians and city government in general because of what they've experienced in the past. Commissioner, would you have anything to add here uh based on conversations that you and uh the task force have discussed?
No, I think you hit the nail on the head. Like, there there will definitely be the the inter-agency collaboration, and I think we've gotten off to a great start. Um the every member of the task force was so engaged throughout the process um and and really excited to operationalize this plan with you and and further involve community members who we know are critical to the success of any plan.
Great. Um I appreciate that. And um I want to say also thank you both for your partnership on the Healing City Act. Um Commissioner Girasa has been a great champion, and Shante was really one of the original thought partners. I noticed in the partnership list was Healing City Baltimore. And so I'm curious, given the amount of overlap, right, that this strategy in some ways hinges on us being trauma-informed, acknowledging the role that trauma plays in fueling cycles of violence. Um how do you see the two pieces of legislation um relating, interplaying with each other? Um and I'm glad, again, that you both have partnered so closely on this work. Um because I think that that's really what folks in our city are looking for right now, is for us, all of us, to be working together when it comes to mission-critical work like this. So I'm curious um how you see that interplay and sort of the overlap between the Healing City Act and the crime prevention, violence prevention work?
I'm happy to go first, Commissioner, or to punt it to you. I've been talking for a little while now. So um another really good question. I would say um it it's ironic that you bring it up. I was literally just having this conversation uh yesterday um with some members of Healing City Baltimore, the movement, and also with um some national leaders that I consider advisors to me uh in this work. And so what we've been talking through and and what I am in the process of starting to pull together is what would our rapid response or crisis response look like in Baltimore City that not only took into account what an agency response needs to be, but what a clinical response looks to needs to be and what a community response needs to be, right? So Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore and Healing City Baltimore and city agencies, how are we going to pull this together in ways that leverage um the skill sets, the knowledge, the abilities that these individual organizations have, right? For example, if I think through Baltimore Ceasefire three sixty-five, and their ability to convene folks in a healing way to honor the love and light of someone who has transitioned due to gun violence in our community. And then I look at organizations like We Are Us, who can be mobilized to help um or at least attempt to reduce retaliation in our neighborhood. So creating all of that as a part of an emergency response system is how I see community and city agencies coming together to co-produce public safety in ways that mirror the legislation. And it's also going to involve some degree of training to make sure that we are all doing it in a trauma-informed and trauma-responsive way, but that we're doing in a in a Baltimore culturally competent, trauma-informed uh and responsive way. Commissioner?
No, I think Director Jackson touched on that. You know, I think that the fact that there there are, there is so much alignment and who is who is working and supporting both pieces of legislation. Um I know from our early discussions with Director Jackson that the approach of Monsi is to use a trauma-informed care lens, right? So even as they were beginning to operationalize the plan, how do we ensure that our language is aligned with a trauma-informed care approach? How do we ensure that that, you know, folks who are training, who are going out into the community, um understand what it means to have a trauma-informed care approach? So um I I think it's a good thing that we're all working so closely on um on similar similar types of legislation.
And that's a great point. And you know, just to circle back here, Councilman Cohen, one of the things that uh the Health Commissioner's team was able to educate my team on in this process um was making changes to the verbiage in the plan, right? Paying attention to the language that we're typing in this plan that we're going to share with community so that it didn't traumatize or trigger or um spin up anyone. Um and I think that's something that as city leaders, we've gotta be more thoughtful about. Um language is really important. Um and I I think that we underestimate its impact. Um so was really excited to to have those editing critiques, um because it it forced us to start to think through how we are vocalizing how the work needs to be done in ways that aren't um trauma-induced.
Well, no, I appreciate that. I get the great fortune of getting those critiques myself um by Commissioner Girasa's team, um which has been really great learning for me as well. So again, I appreciate you both and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman Ramos.
I don't know if there was someone before me, but um um thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and members of the committee and uh Director Jackson and Dr. Girasa. Thank you so much for really putting in amazing work um in this. And I appreciated the the conversations ahead of time um as well. I had uh Councilman uh Cohen uh talked a little bit about uh one thing that um I was going to bring up, which is obviously make being very intentional about communities that feel um that they haven't been involved uh before. So I think I'm I'm grateful that um you're being intentional about that. Um I wanted to ask um a couple other questions. One is, um I need to put my indicators hat on for a moment, um being the um one of the founders of Baltimore Neighborhood Indicators Alliance. In the plan on page nine, uh you have uh Citywide Balance Prevention Plan results and indicators. Um I think that just needs to be refined because you can't have a result that's thriving and an indicator that's thriving. Um uh and then also um just wanted to point out also the 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 larger piece of the indicators. I wanted to just kind of push back on or or at least see if we could enhance, excuse me, um the 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 thriving indicator around employment. Um I think that that's perfect, that's makes sense. However, when we're looking at unemployment rate and employment rates, we're looking at people who are actively looking for employment. In Baltimore City, we have significant amount of people that are not even in the labor force. Um and that's, I think, actually our target there. And so we may want to look at that indicator differently, um using un- unemployment rate, using something else, or or using something else entirely from thriving. Um and uh just be and and, you know, SEMA will help you better than I could probably on this, um but just um wanted to. And I know that when we're using indicators, this is the tough part about using data, but it's so, so, so important, is um to get it where, you know, people understand what we're actually trying to do, right? And so I know that unemployment rate is a very common thing, but it doesn't capture what we're trying to capture here and what I think you're trying to capture here. Um but I and I and I liked how you were doing some of the um the the in the um outcomes and outputs. I mean, that's kind of important. You didn't put that technical language in here, but you have it. So um I I just I'm thrilled that, you know, we're we're go we're moving into the um the, you know, using this um and and using these indicators so that we can see our performance. Um so I I don't know if you want to comment on that a little bit before I go to my second uh part.
Yeah, I think the one thing I would say about the indicators is, um as I've mentioned very briefly, and I didn't go into a lot of detail, we use the results-based accountability approach. So oftentimes, you have a very general end result. Um you might have a leading indicator and what's called lagging indicators. So even though the leading indicator might be, you know, employment rates, the lagging indicator, as you've mentioned, might be, okay, individuals actively seeking work, or it could be some other um smaller data point um that we know is a lagging indicator that would that that might change or move um before the leading indicator might. So happy to, you know, kind of um work with you and and have our team talk with you about how we kind of got to those initial indicators and what some of the lagging indicators uh might be.
Great. And then um my question is about uh um Director Jackson, in our conversation yesterday, you talked a lot about, and you did today as well, inter-agency coordination and how really critical it is. I think all of us realize how absolutely critical that is. And and when we're talking about violence prevention, obviously you're taking on, you know, a humongous issue, and yet sometimes we need to coordinate on an additional issue to actually make it work. So for instance, again, housing, right? If we're doing work in a specific area and people are not being stably housed, or there's vacant properties everywhere, that is really critical. And to to really understand, I know Ms. Murdock is here, um but we we may, I I don't know how, I guess that's an example of how would you sort of work with an agency that isn't traditionally in the um the space of reducing violence, but yet it is a critical component of the social determinants of health uh in um making sure that people are are doing well, is being safely housed and and not living in an area where they feel like nobody cares.
Right, right. Um thanks for the question, uh Councilwoman Ramos. It's a really good one, and it's one that uh the Police Commissioner actually asked me a while back, um as he was thinking through the group violence reduction strategy and reasons why he's seen it fail in the past. Let's say, for example, you're dealing with someone who is a high-risk individual, and you're providing them with the supports that they need, but they say, hey, I can't stay in this house. This neighborhood isn't safe. I need to go somewhere. Uh will Monsi be granted the mayor's political will to hold agencies accountable for making sure that um folks who are really um uh um trying to step out of an an element that may lead them down unsafe or uh paths or paths that result in low qualities of life be afforded the same opportunities? Uh the answer to that question is yes, that we will be working directly with agencies to make sure that folks who are a part of this uh this program, if they say that their living conditions aren't safe, that we're able to find them um safe conditions. It also means that we're going to need to partner with um not just um uh the the city agencies around housing, but also partnering with um um developers and partnering with um landlords around the city. And in fact, as recently as just a couple of days ago, I had someone reach out to my office to say, we're going to have three hundred units coming available soon. Um and so you can already see a a response in Baltimore City um indicating that partnership is what they're looking for. Now, with regard to um living conditions, where we're dealing with um I and J level properties, right, where we're dealing with vacancies, I mean, we know that there are nearly seventeen thousand vacancies in Baltimore City. And as someone who spent most of her life in the Western District, I think that the majority of them probably are in that area. Mayor Scott's been very clear that he um requires an all-hands-on-deck approach to public safety, and he's tasked our office with leading that inter-agency coordination. So every agency is going to be asked to play a role, including the Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh we're going to be looking holistically at environmental conditions and areas that contribute to violence as we work with our partners um to prioritize specific environmental responses that might include abatement and might include um revitalization and rehabilitation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I'm available to jump in as well, if if you'd like.
Oh, please do, Stephanie.
Okay, thank you. I'm Stephanie Murdock, um Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um we're happy to be on this call today, and we look forward to working in an inter-agency capacity. Uh we recognize the connection between housing and public health and the connection between public health and safety. And I think a number of you have already hit on the various ways that DHCD intersects um with those objectives, whether it be uh working with our Code Enforcement Division to make sure where areas of high crime are are cleaned um on a regular basis and and illegal dumping cited. It could be our Development Division, which might focus on uh blocks that are unstable or blocks that are teetering on on instability. or blocks that are teetering on, on instability and use some of our development tools to try to bring those blocks back. Um, and certainly vacant, uh, properties and making sure that those don't become, uh, havens for, for crime and violence. So just wanted to reaffirm our commitment to working with the, the task force and, uh, the actual implementation of the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Ramos. I'm going to open the floor to Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you so much, um, Commissioner DeRosa and Director Jackson for, um, for thi- this presentation. I did have one, um, I did have a few questions. One, I think Director Jackson, you just hit, hit, um, my question about really the, the economics of, of public safety. Uh, one of the things that I've really been speaking with, not only our, our, um, community-based organizations, uh, within District 10, but also some of our state-level and federal partners as well, about what can be done, um, related to the economics of public safety. So making sure that not only, you know, people have, um, you know, people have, you know, employment, making sure that they have stable employment along with the, um, along with the wraparound services to support them as well. And I think that goes to, uh, what, uh, Councilwoman Ramos was speaking about, you know, really delving into these indicators and, you know, really evaluating them, not only just from a, a snapshot perspective, but a longitudinal perspective to ensure that we're making sure that, you know, these individuals are not only getting short-term care, um, and, and connection, but they're getting, um, you know, the longer, longer-term care as well, three to five years down the line. Cause we know that, you know, that, that critical period is within that thirty-day mark where, you know, if an individual, you know, comes home, um, to community, if they don't, if they don't get those type of wraparound services within that thirty-three critical period, they have a less like, I mean, they have a, a greater likelihood of returning back into, into, um, in, in, into, um, our, our criminal justice system. So I just wanted to see if you all have been thinking about, not only just from a public health, but from an economics perspective with regards to these programs and not just in terms of employment, but from a systems level.
Commissioner, I'm ready to go first, uh, but happy to defer to you, uh, given that the task force likely spent some time on this.
We, we did spend some time on it. I think that there's certainly an opportunity to spend more on it. So the Mayor's Office of Employment Development was actually not one of the initially named agencies. And for the purposes of brevity, given the time that we had, we focused on the sixteen named agencies as the original part of the task force, knowing that we would have to bring in other agencies, them being on the top of our list. When we did our turn-the-curve thinking, you know, many people mentioned MoED. Obviously BBC can be a part of that as well. So, um, fully agree that there is opportunity to bring in additional partners that will also, um, look at and help us work through the economic implications of, of violence prevention.
And I think that, you know, just to your point on Commissioner DeRosa, you know, one of the things that, you know, when I speak with, with area business owners, particularly in District 10 about the downtown corridor, one of the things they talk about is that, you know, these, these, these kids need jobs, these kids need jobs, these kids need jobs. You know, I, I was speaking with, you know, many of them being CEOs, I said, well, why don't you give them a job? You know, like this is not, it's not rocket science. And so ensuring that, you know, ensuring that your office is not only coordinating, you know, um, from a inter-agency approach, but also leveraging the council and our respective council districts to reach out to those, those business owners as well to get them, um, involved with, with this, um, state code relationship. Yeah, so I think, I think that's key. I'm glad you all are thinking about that. My next question, and my next question has to relate to, um, the evaluation of Safe Streets. So one of my, you know, as a public health practitioner, one of my major, you know, Safe Streets is doing an amazing job, um, with regard to, um, ensuring that there is like a violence, you know, violence, um, a post-violence, you know, what's the word I'm looking for?
A shooting response?
Yeah, yeah, shooting response. Thank you so much, Director Jackson. Um, you know, a shooting response. One of the things that I would really love for, for, you know, us to focus on, and I know this takes money, is really looking at the prevention aspects of the Safe Streets model. So, you know, this is a plug for, you know, I've spoken with Dr. DeRosa about increasing the funding at the Health Department, um, to ensure that we can, you know, properly fund these programs to not only look at the, the reactionary response to the violence in our city, but also looking at some of the prevention aspects as well. And so, Dr. DeRosa, I just wanted to provide you with an opportunity to outline, um, outline some of those pre- prevention strategies that, that you foresee at, at your Health Department.
Sure, sure. So thank you for that opportunity. I, I will probably start with talking about some of the programs that already exist. Um, and many of our programs are federally funded, um, through, um, grants through DOJ. So we have an Office of Youth and Trauma Services within the Health Department. Um, and a lot of our programs are school-based, so we did have some school-based programs that worked specifically with youth that had been exposed to trauma or had experienced trauma. Um, and so our Y-SAP program again is, is engaging young people, um, and again, connecting them with additional resources. Um, we've had other programs in middle school that, that connect them with, um, mental health resources. Uh, we also have a program that supports families that may be victims of violence, um, helping some families even relocate if needed, um, out of the city so that they can, um, get away from violence. And we have the Recast Program, um, which was a micro-grants program to, um, uh, CBOs and organizations in West Baltimore to help them address, uh, violence prevention within their neighborhoods. So again, we have kind of the smattering of, of those programs, um, in the Health Department currently.
Thank you so much, um, Commissioner DeRosa. And I just want to point out that, you know, you mentioned that most of these, uh, most of these programs are indeed grant-funded, which means that, you know, they are less sustainable than our, than our more, um, you know, there are more kind of concrete, concrete programs in the city. And so when we imagine and we, we, you know, reimagine what, you know, that community policing model looks like, I just want to challenge, you know, all of my councilmembers, this, this is what it looks like. These are the, the types of programs that we need to be advocating for when we talk about that, that allocation shift from, um, you know, from enforcement and, and just our criminal justice system to prevention-based strategies. So thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. And, uh, just as a follow-up to that, since we just touched on it, how, how large are these programs? How many people are we serving? Can you give us a size of the scope for these programs? Is it currently?
They are, they're relatively small. Um, the, the school-based programs are relatively small. So the relocation program, I mean, it may be seventy to eighty families. You know, same thing, our school-based programs, it, it may be less than fifty youth. They're not, they're not particularly large programs. Um, I mean, I think where, where Office of Youth and Trauma Services also serves, um, and this was mentioned briefly, is like the Child Fatality Review, for instance. So that is, um, currently run and coordinated out of the Health Department. And it looks at, uh, deaths and youth across the city. So there's both infant deaths as well as, um, youth deaths related to homicides. Our Office of Youth and Trauma Services, um, along with many other agencies, support that, um, particular review and identifying ways, again, if we've, if we've seen a family who's been a victim of violence, of ensuring that they're connected to additional resources. So, um, so no, the programs are not particularly large.
And do, do we have a sense of what we need? What, what scale we would have to increase to, to meet the need?
We can get, I can get back to you on that if, if it's, and I assume this is a focus on youth-based programs or when you, when you say what, what we need?
We, we can start with youth, youth, youth-based programs. I, I think, uh, generally I want to understand, um, for these programs, if they're showing success, um, at the scale that we would be able to help, um, youth across the city, for instance, what would be the appropriate scale, given a program that may be showing success?
Sure. Yeah, we can get back to you.
That'd be, that'd be great. Any other questions from folks on the committee? Before we run back around for a second round of questions? Seeing no questions, I'll actually, uh, throw in another one. What are, what are, um, Dr. Jackson, you spoke about some of the community meetings that you've scheduled and some of the community meetings that you've already held. What are some of the key takeaways from these community engagement sessions? And, um, what, what are some of the feedbacks that we're getting from these sec, these sessions? Based on the plan that we've seen presented thus far?
Happy to share that. Um, want to make sure that I give the doctor title back to the doctor, um, as I don't hold a doctorate.
I apologize.
Appreciate the compliment.
Doctor, like, not like.
I'm probably a doctor mom to my kids, but, um, so to date, we, we've had sessions with, um, the community members who make up the Mayor's Public Safety Advisory Council. We've had sessions with members of the LBGT community. And we've started to workshop the plan with some agency partners and some council members. The, the first session actually just happened April one, and so we are just in the midst of things. We had to unfortunately reschedule our Latinx session, um, so that we could, um, honor the lives lost in Councilman Cohen's district. And so the feedback that we've gotten thus far, um, has been limited. But what I will say that, that we're hearing are, um, questions like, what is your office going to be doing to help, uh, create trust between BPD and the community? When are we going to get rid of BPD because we don't need police? When, uh, when will, um, um, what, what does, um, the divest, invest model look like? So those are the questions that we've been hearing. Overwhelmingly, we've been getting positive responses to the public health approach to violence. Community members, um, uh, appear to, uh, believe that, that addressing gun violence, victim services, youth justice, community healing and reentry, regardless of the micro-community that we've spoken to, resonates with them. For example, when we spoke with the LBGT community, we heard directly from them that community healing for them is centered around, um, Baltimore creating spaces where they, uh, don't feel dehumanized. Where Baltimore city has done the work itself of understanding what inclusivity looks like so that members of that community feel safe coming in. We also heard from those folks that, um, that concerns about transgender, uh, women of color being safe and being protected are really important to them, especially those that may choose sex work as a lifestyle. Um, and, and so we're hearing very real and personal experiences from folks that's helping us craft and shape any changes that we'll be making to the long-term strategic plan to make sure that we're accounting for that. In the Latinx community, while we didn't have the session, what we heard, um, in Councilman Cohen's district, was, um, this feeling of being unseen. And so Councilman Cohen's question was very timely. How do we make sure that, that, uh, we're engaging with folks in ways that, uh, we're truly demonstrating that we aren't just listening, but we hear them and that we're applying, um, public safety methodologies that they believe will make their community safe?
Thank you, uh, Director Jackson. I want to, I want to, uh, maybe address some of the earlier comments or questions that you're hearing from the community, uh, about disbanding our police department or anything like that. And I, I don't think that's something that we're strongly considering, and I can't speak for all the councilmembers here, uh, or, or otherwise, but, um, I think, um, the larger question about taking a more holistic approach to public safety and violence in our city is certainly something that we all want to make sure we do, and we do right. And, and that's why I think this hearing today is so important, and especially the work that you'll be doing going forward. And I think all the agencies here as well want to, want to be, uh, partners in, in that endeavor. With that, do we have any other questions from the committee? Seeing no further questions from the committee, uh, the committee will now take public testimony. I don't see many people on the line, but, um, we can open that up. So, uh, committee staff will coordinate the public testimony. Please be patient. If you are connecting online, please use the raise hand function at the bottom right to indicate that you wish to testify. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking. Users who call in can and cannot be identified by name will be unmuted by the host one by one. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when they are unmuted. Please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. And if a speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back or to provide their testimony in the chat function. With, with that, uh, if you would like to testify, please raise your hand, uh, using ra- raise hand function on the bottom right. I don't see any testimony at the moment. Uh, we'll check the lines. And we don't have any call-ins. So with that, I want to thank, uh, all the folks here today. I want to thank, um, Dr. DeRosa and Director Jackson, I won't mess that up again, um, for taking the time next to walk us through the, the framework and the strategy. And I, I look forward to seeing the implementation of this, this plan going forward. I, I, I know, um, there, there's still a lot of moving pieces. So, uh, Director Jackson, I want to give you an opportunity. I know you guys are still taking feedback. For folks that may watch this later or have questions, how can you provide feedback, uh, on this plan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you can provide feedback multiple ways. You can attend any of our virtual, uh, Facebook sessions. They are happening every Monday, every Wednesday, every Thursday night. The first session on those days is at five thirty PM. The second session on those days is at seven o'clock PM. It not only allows for interaction with the MONSE team, but also with community members directly. And so it is truly a way to co-produce public safety together. Uh, my team's recording all feedback in that way. In addition to that, um, folks can go to MONSE, M-O-N-S-E dot BaltimoreCity.gov. And the plan is the first thing that you see, the framework and the plan are the first things that you see. You can create feedback or, or share feedback there as well, or you could just email us directly at MONSE@BaltimoreCity.gov.
Thank you, guys. Thank you once again. Uh, with no further comments, question, this hearing is in recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.